Good evening and welcome to the Chatham Board of Selectmen's last meeting of 2020. It's December 29th. This is remote participation only. Please note, this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly thereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify me. Pursuant to the Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 23, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Chatham Board of Selectmen is being conducted via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 134208476, or join the meeting online via the Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel 18, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access, and we will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. So this is remote participation, and it's important that we're able to conduct the meeting to the best of our ability tonight to allow for the presentations to be heard and to have public comments at the appropriate time. Before we start the meeting, I'm asking that the remote participants, please mute your audio and disable your video until the appropriate time if you wish to speak. We will begin the meeting by taking a roll call of the Board of Selectmen in order to declare we have a quorum. So the roll calls start. Selectmen Kokolas?
Present.
Selectmen Matters?
Present.
Selectmen Dykens?
Present.
Selectmen DeCastro?
Present.
And the Chair is present, so I declare a quorum. The first order of business tonight is to accept meeting minutes for December 19, 2020 site visit. Do we have a motion to accept the meeting minutes?
Madam Chair, Peter, I move that we accept the December 19, 2020 site visit minutes.
Okay, any second on that?
Second.
Any additions or edits for that meeting?
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Dean.
I have three. In the first sentence, right at the end, as I recall, you took a roll call term in the quorum. So I would suggest we add, were the unanimous quorum present by roll call?
Okay.
And then in this next paragraph, this third sentence, it says the Director of CD was also present. I would add in that the Town Manager and the Director of CD were also present.
Thank you.
And lastly, you took a vote to adjourn, so I would, in the next paragraph, the site visit concluded at 9:38 a.m. by unanimous vote to adjourn.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other additions or edits to the December 19 meeting? Hearing none, I'll take a vote to accept. Selectmen Kokolas?
Aye.
Selectmen Matters?
Aye.
Selectmen Dykens?
Aye.
Selectmen DeCastro?
Aye.
And the Chair says aye. Okay, those meeting minutes have been approved. The second is to accept the meeting minutes of December 22, 2020, a motion to accept the meeting minutes.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Okay, and a second by Dean. Any additions or edits to these very hefty meeting minutes?
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Dean.
Two minor ones. Page five, second to last paragraph, second to last sentence, where it says, she said the court would consider the board decision. It's he said the court.
Okay.
And then on page 14. Go up here. Yes, under Public Comments, Section F, Mirabob and Chatham said she is a parent.
Got it.
Instead of a parent. Those are it.
Okay, great. Any others? I, hold on. Jeff, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Dean. I had a couple of those on page five. Second paragraph up from the bottom, the HBDC just needs apostrophe S. So the HBDC's own regulations, just needs an apostrophe S there. Page five, and I have one other. Couple too many periods on page 11, second paragraph, just typo. And then we had apparent as well. Thank you, that's it.
Okay. Any others from the board? All right, seeing none, we'll take a vote to approve. Selectmen Kokolas?
Aye.
Selectmen Matters?
Aye.
Selectmen Dykens?
Aye.
Selectmen DeCastro?
Aye.
And the Chair says aye. So the meeting minutes of December 22 have been approved. Okay, so we're going to move on. I just want to go through a little bit, just an overview. Our next order of business is going to be a public announcements and agenda item requests. This is when you may make a general non-deliberative community announcement or request an item to be considered for upcoming agenda. Do we have anybody on the board that would wish to make an announcement or agenda item? I think, Peter, you did?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you.
Go ahead.
I request an agenda item, and it may be items, on what do we want Chatham to be in the future? I think it was brought up last week. We talked about that. And do we want to continue moving towards an exclusive, what I'd refer to as a retirement second homeowner community, and that's exclusive, or make the commitment toward a more balanced economic and demographic community of year-round residents that would include retirees and second homeowners? Now, that's probably, I'm thinking a two-part agenda, maybe. First is the statement of our vision, and you would think that would be simple, but you never know. And then followed by a strategic plan, and I comment that this is consistent with what we started with Chatham 365, one of their recommendations, and I'll quote that, to have a formal town vision which includes a strategic plan for sustaining year-round residents with strict accountability members. And just to point out that, you know, our Board of Selectmen goals and objectives have been following that, and it supports the 365 recommendation, even without a formalized vision, but I think it's important that we do a formalized vision now, especially in the issues we had. And it also point out that, you know, we're in the midst of a strategy and action that would be integral to any kind of a plan that was recommended by 365, or any kind of strategic plan. Our budget, and that is our budget priorities. And Chatham faces a critical crossroads, I believe, in the next months and the following fiscal year. Our budget priority decisions, especially, I think on capital and operating expenditures, must be consistent with, and more importantly, enable that the Chatham we envisioned it to be. So I say that also that we think about that as we continue today's discussion. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Peter, any other board members wish to make a announcement or agenda item request? Hearing none, how about staff? Anybody, any of the staff? I think Dr. Duncanson had something he wanted to share with us. Dr. Duncanson?
Yeah, good evening, and thank you, Madam Chair. Unfortunately, I have the dubious distinction of bringing some disappointing news to you and the town tonight. Just prior to tonight's meeting, we were notified by David Doherty, who's been spearheading the effort to save the Coast Guard boathouse and return it to Chatham for reuse, either as an upweller or as a new bathhouse at Harding's Beach, or potentially some other use. But it appears that those efforts have broken down and have not been successful. We don't have all the details yet, but it appears that the current owners of the building, for whatever reason, have decided not to move forward with the sale of the building. And so it looks at this point as if unfortunately, the former Coast Guard boathouse on Stage Harbor, which is currently in Hull, is going to be demolished to meet a court order and brought on due to some violations of zoning and conservation and all in Hull, where it was, it's been sitting now for a fair number of years. So I just wanted to make the board aware of that, as well as the community, because I know, you know, over the last two months, there's been a lot of interest, and David and his group have been working extremely hard behind the scenes. Jill and I have been involved recently to help them with some interaction with the Town of Hull. And as late as yesterday, those things were moving in a positive direction, but unfortunately, late this afternoon, it looks like they've taken a turn in the unfortunate direction. So I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Thank you, Bob. Just want to express my appreciation to the community members that we're working on that, and to the town staff that we're doing due diligence to bring forward. We did have it on our agenda for discussion, and I think it was next week. There was timeliness to everything, but oftentimes, things like this are not in our own control as they move forward. So disappointing news, to say the least, for the community, but thank you, everyone that tried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other staff members have any agenda items or public announcements? None? Okay. I'm going to turn to the remote participants and see if anybody has an agenda item request or public announcement. If you do, raise your virtual hand in the Teams app or speak out by voice, and I'll make a list, and then I'll call on you individually. You have up to five minutes to make your comments. Any public comments this evening from the remote participants? Okay, I'm hearing none. All right, thank you. So to review our agenda tonight, we have in our new business section, we're going to have a COVID update from Dr. Duncanson and from Jill. And at that time, the public will have an opportunity to ask questions, and so we'll turn to that at this time. So, Dr. Duncanson, you want to pop back into the meeting again and give us a little COVID update, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So for tonight's COVID update, I'll keep it, again, pretty brief, because I know you have an upcoming discussion on the capital plan. But just briefly, as it involves this afternoon, there were 5,181 cases in Barnstable County, and that is up 64 cases from yesterday, and an increase of 537 cases since your meeting last week on the 22nd. So I think that just indicates that unfortunately, the Cape is in the surge as well as the rest of the Commonwealth. There were 229 deaths reported in Barnstable County, no new ones since yesterday, which is a good sign. And there was an increase in eight deaths since your meeting last week. So last week, we were at 221, we are now at 229. In Chatham, we currently have a total of 89 cases. And if you let me, give me a second, let me share my screen here. Here is a breakdown of the Chatham cases that we currently have. Hope you can all see this. And I just wanted to highlight once again, again, that we've had more cases in December than we've had in any other month since the pandemic began. So far this month, we've had 35 cases. And as you are well aware, today is only the 29th, so unfortunately, we still have a couple more days to add cases in December. And as you can see, there's been a sharp uptick in the growth of the red line, which is our cumulative case count since the pandemic began back in March, indicating that, yes, this has been the worst month we've had so far. And then just the other graph that I wanted to show you is our one for the age distribution. And this figure has not changed substantially. You know, it's been updated now that we have 89 cases in total, but the, you know, the demographic range and the number of cases has not changed dramatically. Again, that 20 to 29-year-old demographic continues to lead the pack with greater than 20% of our cases. But we've also seen an uptick in the younger demographic, the 0 to 19-year-olds. Over the last week or so, there were a number of cases related to the Montomoy school system, as well as some others. And, you know, without definitive proof, they're probably related to the Thanksgiving and in, you know, the aftermath of Thanksgiving and people traveling. So, back to the screen again, let me stop sharing. And then the other thing that I wanted to just touch on is vaccine, because I know that is a very hot topic everywhere in Chatham, as well as the rest of the Cape and around the country. So just a couple of quick numbers. As of last Tuesday, the 22nd, which the state is now providing a weekly vaccine status update, similar to what they produce on cases and deaths and other things. But as of the 22nd, the state had received a little over 146,000 doses of vaccine for distribution, and they were pretty well all distributed out to primarily hospitals and other acute care facilities. As of last Tuesday, 35,000 of those, a little over 35,000 of those doses had been administered. I'm sure the count is up, you know, that is much higher today. The next report won't be out till tomorrow, so unfortunately, you know, we're always kind of a week behind, if you will. 5,325 of those doses were shipped to Barnstable County, primarily to Cape Cod Care. And that's, that number of doses equates to about 2.5% of the population of Barnstable County. And most of those doses, as I said, went to Cape Cod Healthcare and have been administered at Cape Cod Hospital and Falmouth Hospital and others. Because as I'm sure you're aware, as well as members of the public, the first group to receive the vaccine were the hospital workers, those in direct contact with COVID-19 cases or COVID-19 facing, as the state calls them, you know, doctors, nurses, dieticians, environmental workers and whatnot that are dealing directly with COVID patients. I'm happy to report that the other group that was in that first batch, which is the long-term care facilities, vaccination started today at Liberty Commons for those folks, both the residents of long-term care facilities as well as the workers there. So that was started today. That is being done under a federal contract to CVS and Walgreens. So that, hopefully, that went very well today, and those are moving on. Now, I know there's been a lot of questions, because we've been getting a fair number of questions in the office and at EOC from people wanting to know when they can get the vaccine. We have a link on the town's website on our COVID-19 page to the state's COVID-19 page. And the reason we did it that way was the state is updating their COVID-19 vaccine page twice a week. And so I felt the most, the most important way to get up-to-date information was to link directly to that website. So the people that have a question as to when they may be eligible for a vaccine, that is the most up-to-date place, because it is being updated as the state changes and makes adjustments to their vaccine priorities. But again, the priorities right off the bat are healthcare workers and the residents of long-term care facilities, and that'll probably go for another couple of weeks before they start the next group. And the easiest way to see where you, as an individual, may fit into that group is to go to the state's website, and they have some pretty clear information right on that page for you. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Any questions from the board for Dr. Duncanson? Peter?
Yeah, Madam Chair. Thank you, Bob. Would you comment on how our hospitals are doing as far as the number of COVID cases that are in there, or over the last week or two?
The number of cases at both Cape Cod and Falmouth has increased slightly. They've been averaging in the upper teens to low 20s in terms of the number of patients they've had with COVID-19. The numbers change almost, well, the numbers change daily as people are brought in, moved around, and sent home, luckily, for most people. But that's where it's been, and then upper teens to low 20s for most days on the Cape.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Okay. Any questions from the remote participants? Just please raise your hand, your app, Teams app hand, or call out your name. If you don't have that, I see Elaine. Go ahead, Elaine.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bob, I don't know if you have an answer to this, but I know that at least the Pfizer has to be kept at 94 degrees. I think it's anywhere between minus 76 and minus 112 degrees. When they transport these vaccines to, like Liberty Commons, obviously, facilities like that don't have that kind of refrigeration system. Do you know how it's transported? And if it comes in their own refrigeration systems? And how long it lasts? Like, if the temperature starts to go up, does something happen to the vaccine? Is it ineffective or something? I just was curious as to how they can, some of these facilities where they're distributing can keep it at that temperature. And I couldn't find any literature on it. I just wondered if you happened to know. Thank you.
Yes, there is information about the vaccine storage requirements on the CDC website, but that was why initially the vaccine was rolled out to acute care hospitals and all, because they do have the proper freezers to, the vaccine has to be stored at minus 95 degrees. So that is extremely cold. It was shipped in dry ice, in specialized containers that will hold the dry ice, the proper temperature, for about three to five days. And then that dry ice can be replenished. So when it's removed from a freezer situation and transported to other locations, it's put back in the transport containers with dry ice, and that holds it at the proper temperature until it's actually thawed out and then, you know, injected. And once it's thawed, they have a certain number of hours to administer it. So they generally don't thaw the entire amount at one time, but they know how many doses they can inoculate in a given period of time. And so they will thaw out each vial basically as they need it. But in the meantime, it's held at the proper temperature under dry ice.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from any remote participants? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Bob.
Okay, thank you.
Grim news on the numbers, that's for sure. Okay, COVID update from our Town Manager, Jill. Jill Golds.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. So as you know, we had paused our public access by appointments to town offices in, around Thanksgiving, and we're going to continue that pause until January 29th to get us through the new year. With that said, staff are in the office on rotations, and so they're answering calls, emails, we have drop boxes, and I haven't heard any complaints about any lapse in service. So if there's any concerns, I'm sure that a resident or member of the public could call the particular department, and we'll do whatever we can to get you the information that you need. So with that, the employees are on their remote rotation basis. So while each department is staffed, we're working to have contact between employees as minimal as possible, mostly in the central areas. So while we have the workplace modifications and everything has worked out well, we just thought it would be in the best interest to do a rotation. So that rotation will be in effect until February 1st. And we'll revisit that well before February 1st. And we've been in that rotation for two weeks now. And that's all I have is a relate to town offices. I know we have Alex scheduled for a financial COVID update, and she has a few items to report.
Okay. Hi, Alex.
Good evening. Thank you, Jill. Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I just have a couple of items to report tonight. We're at the end of December, but we did receive notification of the hotel motel tax. And that's what I wanted to report tonight to the board. And this is for stays that happened during September. And this is for stays that happened during September, October, and November. And we received a total of four-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand, twenty-one dollars. And that is four-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars less than the same period last year. So, while the first quarter was very good for us with the short-term rentals and stronger than the previous period for FY twenty-twenty, this particular receipt for September, October, November, as I said, is, you know, a lot less, more, more than half of what we declined from last year. So, we'll continue to watch that as we go through December and post the rest of the local receipts. We'll keep the board updated, and I'll have that for your meeting in January. So, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Alex. Dean has his hand up right away, so, Dean? Question for Jill or for Alex?
Yeah, this is for Alex. Alex, so that, that reduction of four-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand from last year, that's for the same period, September through November?
That's correct.
And of course, last year, we did not have the short-term rental tax income, did we not? Did we?
Yeah, we did have it. It was effective as of July first last year. However, the Department of Revenue didn't break it out. And also, any rooms that were booked prior to January first, twenty-twenty, you didn't have to pay the short-term rental tax. So, I think it took a long time. So, again, we're not comparing apples to apples. However, we do have the breakdown of the traditional lodging for the same period for this time was, of that four-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand, was three-hundred-and-three-thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars.
And we don't, we can't really compare that to the prior year, because we didn't have the breakdown as between the short-term rental and the traditional lodging.
Right. However, if I go back to twenty, I have it all the way back to two thousand and eight, but two, twenty-nineteen, without the short-term rentals, was six-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand. Prior to that, six-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand. So, this is the lowest that it's been since I've been tracking it here in Chatham.
It's not surprising. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board for Alex or Jill? Any of the remote participants wish to ask Jill or Alex a question? Okay, I'm not seeing any. All right, thank you both very much.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Okay, so, we're going to move on, and our next agenda item is public comments. And this is where the public may make comments in relationship to our business agenda, which is board discussion items, board discussion-only items. And so, tonight, we'll be talking about, we'll have a quarterly update from the Chamber of Commerce and the Merchants Association. That's part of our board of selectmen's goals and objectives. And then, we'll do a fiscal year 2022 budget policy discussion, capital projects prioritization. Again, that's part of our goals and objectives moving forward. And I believe this will be part of a conversation, ongoing conversation that we'll have. And then, we'll consider appointments for the community housing partnership. Dean, your hand is up. Is there?
No, I'm sorry.
Is it still up or continues? Okay, no worries. So, please use the Teams app hand raising mechanism, or if you'd wish to speak on any of the agenda items presently, or call out your name if you don't have that app. So, I see one hand raised now.
Florence Selden.
Hi, Florence. Okay, we have Mr. Myers, and then Selectman Selden, who's on the Finance Committee. Anybody else? We have Barbara Segal. I think Elaine was before Ms. Segal in the, in the hand raising here, just looking. Any others? Please speak out. All right, I'm not hearing any. So, we'll start with Mr. Myers, and there is a five-minute limit on your comments. Mr. Myers, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Am I permitted to also make remarks at the end of the business agenda?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay, thank you. I was very pleased to see in the town manager and finance director's prioritization letter to you, the Council on Aging Facility scored at the top of the proposed capital projects for town meeting articles. This is what those who support locating the facility at sixteen-ten Main Street have been advocating for a long time, and I hope you will agree that it should be the number one priority going forward. A new, modern facility at sixteen-ten Main Street meets all the town key policy criteria outlined in the letter, including aesthetics, cultural and recreational opportunities, utilization by the community, contextually appropriate structure, economic opportunity, in this case, for West Chatham, and most importantly, the public health and safety of Chatham's growing senior populations. I reviewed all the citizen remarks from your December fifteen meeting and noted that some are still concerned about possible lingering effects of COVID-19, even after completion of vaccination of the U.S. population. So, so long as legitimate, and I emphasize legitimate, concerns exist, they can be appropriately addressed by postponing town meeting action on the COA facility to a future date. That's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. Our next speaker is Selectman Selden. I don't know if you're muted, Florence.
Sorry, Madam Chair. I thought I saw an item on the agenda dealing with the select board's request, possible request to the state legislature for a, allowing a difference in the funding for affordable housing, attainable housing with CPA funds. Am I incorrect?
That's not on tonight's agenda, Florence. That's not an up.
Then I will say my statements.
Okay, that's all right, no worries. We like to move things around. Yeah, we like to move things around a little. All right, so, our next speaker is Elaine.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to address the capital projects prioritization, and I normally would hold my comments to the end, because I would much prefer to hear what you have to say, because some of these things I'm not particularly familiar with. But in reading the packet, according to the documents, the Collins Center's final report that resulted in this prioritization was dated January of two thousand and nineteen, which is now two years ago. And so, a lot of has happened in the interim, and I don't know how this particular list for your purposes is valuable or relevant. Basically, the Council on Aging is ranked not only as the most costly, but also number two in terms of need. And I looked through the review criterion ranking, and I don't see where it does fit in, in many of those categories, because it still is dealing with a smaller population, and we simply don't know what the impact of COVID is going to be on people's behavior, whether or not people are vaccinated. I think behaviors have changed for a lot of people in terms of congregating. So, I would hope that that gets postponed. Secondly, I think the storm, again, without knowing the details, because I don't know what it's involved, but as I look at it, I think stormwater and drainage are kind of far down on the list. There's, there are a lot of puddles in town, a lot of drainage issues, that I think that should be considered, you know, maybe things have changed in, in the interim over the last two years, where I think there have been some problems, and I'd like to know more about that, to see if that could get higher up on the list. And then, in terms of the wastewater management continued expansion for seven million, I had previously made a request for an agenda item to have a wastewater update on how much we've already spent, how many homes are connected, also how much of the thirty million that I believe we appropriated maybe two or three years ago has been spent and where, and how much more this is going to cost, and where the issue, where the work is being directed. So, because I think that might go further up the list, or if there's still money available that's been appropriated, maybe further down the list. But I would hope we really consider strongly the Council on Aging. That is the single biggest ticket item on here, and we simply don't know what the future's going to be like, whether this is even going to be something that people are going to want to do. Forty-five-hundred square feet of program space where people are interacting and stuff, and that's an awful lot of space if nobody goes up. So, thank you very much. That's it for now, and I'll see if I have any comments at the end. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Elaine. Our next speaker is Barbara Segal. Barbara?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you just, Barbara Segal, Chairperson of the Council of Aging Board of Directors. I think the Council of Aging new building should be a very high priority. In fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, according to Town Census, there were three-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy-two residents in Chatham over the age of sixty. That year, there were eight-thousand-seven-hundred-and-thirty-six in-building participation at the Chatham Senior Center. Our number continues to grow. The present facility does not provide adequate room for our programs, and it is clear that ventilation in the existing rooms is unhealthy. One example is the six-hundred-and-forty-square-foot exercise room in the basement. There is a wooden support column in the center, and there are two rectangular basement windows. At a previous selectmen meeting recently, Joe Bragman said that the original plans for the new senior center at sixteen-ten Main Street included a high-efficiency heating and cooling system, and in each room is ventilated independently. He also stated that one possible addition is a germicidal ultraviolet disinfecting system that resides above the ceiling and can purify the air in a room in a half an hour. Every major building in Chatham has been modernized except the senior center. We have waited ten years for a new center. According to the project manager, building construction will take between fourteen and sixteen months. I will not be able to join my friends and benefit from the COA programs for another three to five years. How long do we wait? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Segal. Our next speaker is Mr. Levitt. Rick Levitt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to address to one of the previous speaker's comments about the size of the senior center proposed here at Chatham for West Chatham at sixteen-ten Main Street. Sandwich Building, a modern senior center, right now, at a slightly higher per capita cost than Chatham. The senior population in Sandwich is greater than in Chatham, but Sandwich's building cost is sixteen-point-five million dollars compared to eight to nine million dollars estimated for here in Chatham. Building cost per capita in Sandwich is thirty-six-hundred dollars, capita of the senior population. In Chatham, it's lower, at thirty-three-hundred dollars. The Chatham Senior Center building size is in line with Sandwich and other communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levitt. Are there any other remote participants who would like to speak publicly on any of the items we'll be discussing in our business agenda tonight? Okay, I'm not hearing any. So, we will move into our business agenda tonight, and our first order of business is a quarterly update from the Chatham Chamber of Commerce and the Merchants Association, which is something that we had requested and put in our Board of Selectmen's Goals and Objectives to hear from the business community directly, quarterly. So, I think Mary Kavanaugh is on the call. I'm not sure if the president of the Merchants Association is as well, and who's making the first presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's Mary Kavanaugh. And Susan Dim, the president of the Merchants Association, is also on the call.
Okay.
I will start off with the chamber portion of the report. Susan will come in with the, the merchandise portion of the report. So, from the businesses that we spoke to, this is, this is the report that we are presenting tonight. Retail business is down about twenty-five to thirty percent over last year. Primarily, it's felt that primarily this is due to the three-month closure and a slower summer season. Businesses that are related to the home, home projects, and the real estate market have fared better. Smaller hotels tend to be down about forty to fifty percent, where larger properties that have more flexibility with space, staffing, and what they're able to offer their guests have fared and are faring better. Restaurants are down about twenty to thirty percent. The consensus is that people are concerned or hesitant about dining inside. Restaurants are finding that if they can get people inside and can provide an environment that feels safe, then people will come back. The ability to offer outside dining, outdoor dining, and crib-side pickup has been beneficial to businesses for sure. The cost associated with providing a safe experience, all the PPP, is definitely a costly added expense for all of our businesses, restaurants and retail. And the new twenty-five percent of capacity guideline is concerning. Businesses are hopeful, however, that it, it won't be in place for long. Businesses definitely wanted to stress that they're thankful for the local business support that they've received. They feel fortunate in that respect. Businesses have adjusted to make up for less income. For example, publications may have fewer pages, full-time staffing has been adjusted, and some business, some business owners are taking less of the salary. In some cases, owners aren't paying themselves. And the expectations of the first quarter are weak, but, you know, typically, first quarter for here, you know, the expectations are, are lower. The new stimulus package does give everybody some hope, though. And what we're doing to hopefully help, as, as the Chamber and Merchants Association, we've continued to increase social media marketing via Facebook and Instagram. We've reached more than two-hundred-and-fifty viewers between the Chamber and Merchants Facebook pages over the last nine months. Actions, including shares, clicks, likes, comments, and followers between both pages is roughly seventy thousand. And again, that's over the last nine months. We've provided a hundred-and-ninety informative constant contact emails to our members since mid-March. We've shared more than two-hundred news items on our news page of our website, and more than a hundred-and-fifty of those have been on behalf of the town. So, different things that, that the town was sharing or posting, we have shared as well. Our members can stay current with all things Chatham via a news page link that's located in all of our constant contact emails that they receive. And also, our constant contact emails contain a link to the town's coronavirus update page, which is on the town website. We have an initiative underway by both boards of the Chamber and the Merchants to visit all of the businesses in town, to try and learn what their needs are, get feedback on what we are doing well and what we need to improve upon. We're also in the process of rolling out additional advertising opportunities for our members on our website. Our Spring twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two Chatham Guidebook, the creation of that is underway. There'll be a printed publication as well as a digital publication, and the digital version can be accessed on our website. And new this year, which we feel is, is going to be a great benefit for our members, we've secured a secured a sponsorship spot on the page of the Cape and Islands Guide, which the Cape and Islands Guide is essentially the Cape Cod Chamber Guidebook. And typically, that's a printed publication, but this year, it's going to be digital. Each town will have a page, and there'll be four to five sponsorship spots on that page. And the Chamber will be one of the ones on the Chatham page. So, this will give exposure to all of our members who don't have the opportunity to sponsor a page themselves. So, we're hoping that that will be helpful. The Chamber and Merchants promoted Small Business Saturday, Shop Local, Shop Mass, and the Giving Tuesday campaign, which would be for our nonprofit members, on both of our Facebook pages as well as Instagram. We also promoted the Chatham Coronavirus Impact Fund on the Chamber and Merchants Facebook pages. As you know, this is the fund that benefits Chatham residents in need as a result of the virus. And the Chatham Coronavirus Impact Fund also hosted a couple of community assessment surveys, which we promoted for them as well. And the hope of these surveys is to be able to learn how the virus is affecting our community. So, we helped get that word out as well. The Chamber and Merchants Executive Boards, this is something new that we're doing. We are going to be meeting quarterly just to review our goals and accomplishments and see that we're both working together and on the same page with things. We're also going to be releasing a press release, announcing the members of both of our boards, just so that people will know in the community who is involved, and if they have an issue, who they can reach out to. And the Chamber is continuing to work with the town to communicate information about the sidewalks, the West Chatham Rotary, and the SOAR Project as well. And one last thing that we're doing that's new this year is the Merchants and the Chamber have come up with some new committees that are going to be made up of folks from each organization. One being membership, one being marketing, a long-range planning committee, a beautification committee, and then an events committee, which will bring all the events that are usually brought by their Chamber and Merchants. And with that, I will turn it over to Susan to talk about the merchants.
Good evening. The Merchants Association has been very proactive since the very beginning of the pandemic. Normally, we would meet twice a month, and in March, we started meeting weekly, and we continued that through September via Zoom. Our meetings are always open. Anyone is welcome to attend and speak. And so, there were times where we had as many as 13 guests, because people were trying very hard to figure out what was going on, to coordinate activities, to who was open, who wasn't open, where do you get supplies. So, I think that that was really... We've now gone back to our normal twice-monthly meetings. And again, anyone is welcome. Most of our activities have been canceled for the year, but we still managed to pull off things like Pumpkin People. We had 15 Pumpkin People that were socially distanced, of course, on exhibit in Cape Cod Park, including one from both the Chamber and the Merchants called "We Are All in This Together." The Oktoberfest, obviously, we couldn't take place, but we did a video with the Chatham Obermeister. We had in-store promotions that were promoted via social media and on our websites. This year, we started a new activity called the Great Pumpkin Way-in, where we had over 200-pound pumpkins placed in Cape Cod Commercial Fisherman's Alliance, the Chatham Light Liquors, and Cape Cod Park. People scanned a barcode to guess each pumpkin's weight and were entered to win a gift card and, of course, the pumpkin. The two of the people decided not to take the pumpkin, so they were donated to people with chickens. And I think probably we should have taken a video of the chickens eating a 200-pound pumpkin. The Christmas Stroll, we obviously couldn't do in traditional manner, but we've continued a lot, some of it. We've had scarfs for sale. We've sold over 400 of those. We picked off with a virtual tree lighting and a story hour with Santa that had over 1,000 views. Our annual breakfast of Santa was replaced with Santa in a giant snow globe at the community center, which was a huge success. People were able to take selfies with Santa and not even give him COVID, which was really good. And that had a tremendous amount of positive feedback and thanks were received. We received emails thanking the Chamber and the Merchants Association for the experience, thanking us for keeping up the tradition that the kids could actually see Santa and that we were making an effort when no one else was, and that hasn't been lost on the community. So, that was very successful. We also did the 12 Days of Christmas giveaways with Chippy the Chatham Elf, who visited participating businesses, and these were promoted on social media and our website. Local gift certificates were given as prizes. The decoration of the town was a huge focus this year. I don't think it's ever looked more beautiful. We decorated the park with more lights. We worked with local businesses to increase their decorations. We also worked with Park and Rec to have them decorate the library and some additional places. And we've asked that people please leave their lights up at least till President's Day, so that the town looks bright and vibrant and alive and not dark and gloomy. We added a buoy tree to Sears Park that was sponsored by Sandy Wykoff of the Chatham Clothing Company. This is something that we're going to pull out every year, and it's been constructed in such a way that we can keep adding platforms to the bottom of it, so it will continue to grow. And my vision is to keep it going until it's as big as the tree in Rockefeller Center. But we still need buoys. We didn't even have enough buoys this year to do the full tree that we had had built. So, please take the buoys off your sheds and give them to the tree in the park. What else? Let's see. The Merchants Association, the Chamber, Park and Rec, CBI, Candy Manor, Chatham Tees, the Wings United Inn, and the Chatham Village Market were all part of funding the initiative to upgrade lighting and the wiring in the park. The park lights were converted to LEDs, and they have waterproof outlets on them now, just new. This will save a lot of money in addition to the fact that the lights are brighter. The light poles were painted. We've added additional plugs throughout the park, so we don't have to use extension cords across the path, and this will add to the vibrancy of downtown and can also be used for multiple holidays. And we also put reeds on other light poles. So, we've been busy keeping things going, which has been exciting. And we have, when the numbers get better, we can pull out Mondays on Main and do it at any time of the year, and we can pull it out within a week or two. So, that's in our back pocket, if the numbers get big enough or low enough that we can then promote something. And that's it for now. So, thank you.
Thank you, both of you. It seems it just hasn't been easy for local businesses anywhere, hearing some of the challenges that people have done and what they've done to... Some of the businesses have just been very creative in keeping themselves open and applying to all the COVID safety protocol and keeping their employees safe. We've had some instances of COVID, but all in all, I think we've been very lucky, and I think our local retail establishments have done a really great job in the work that they've done in that way. Mary, are you hearing, or Susan, are you hearing any early closures? Or are we losing any businesses right now? Or any shifts or changes happening with some of the local businesses?
Yeah, this is Susan. We're constantly asking, I don't care if they're members or not, how people are doing, what we can do to help, how we can coordinate, is anybody in trouble? And the only business that was sort of on the verge was Paws and Claws, and that was because Lou's brother had had a stroke, they lost their groomer, and they were really struggling there for a while, and I think everybody was just ordering from Chewy.com. So, we put out the word. I think that that helped their businesses a little bit, and then they obviously were able to negotiate with their landlord, and then they got a new groomer. So, they were the only one on the verge. Everyone has been able to sort of struggle on by, but you had to think outside the box, and this is not a normal year. And I think that the clothing stores got hit the most, particularly the shoe stores, because nobody sees their feet on Zoom. And in the summer, they're only wearing flip-flops. So, please bear that in mind, that they're the ones who really had a hard time. Everyone else, I think, has managed to squeak on by.
And obviously, the home service industry has been doing really well.
Right. And because of that, the lawyers are doing well because of all the real estate's doing well. Liquor stores have done very well. But I think that the clothing stores and the real small businesses have had it the worst.
Okay. Questions from the board? Any questions from the board? I'm not seeing anybody's hands raised. Jeff, your hand is raised.
Yeah, I have, not only have one question, but a few comments. I just really enjoyed both the reports by Mary and Susan. You've both been really busy in very trying, difficult times, but I think you brought a lot of energy and spirit, and especially communication to your efforts. I think communicating with your fellow members, your fellow business people with the town as well, I think you both have an excellent relationship with Jill and her staff, and I think communication is key, especially in these trying times. Love the buoy tree, that the decorations are phenomenal. I had one question. Did many of the businesses take advantage of the Paycheck Protection Program? I was interested to know that. And then, are folks talking about anything in the new stimulus plan that was just announced? Thanks.
Hey, Jeff, it's Mary. To answer your question about the PPP, I think that a lot of folks did take advantage of the first round of that, and the folks that weren't successful in that round are hoping for this new round to be able to get some relief from that.
Yeah, if they're looking for assistance or their resources available, do you have recommendations? It's an excellent program. The first round was, in spite of some of the negative press, it really was an excellent program.
Yeah, we try and get out as much info as we can about the procedures and policies for those programs, and also any other programs that might be available to our members. We definitely do try and communicate all that information to them as best we can. And I just really want to communicate to all of you that it's really a team effort between the Chamber and the Merchants, and our operations manager at the Chamber, Denise Scribner, working with getting everything on the website, and then our part-time marketing person that helps us with our constant contact emails and Facebook posts, and Jen Allard, who helps with the merchants. It's really a team effort. So, I just want to stress that, so everyone knows that.
Yeah, you bet. Well, thank you both. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff. Peter, your hand is up. Peter, I think you might be mute, or your hand's down.
Okay. How's that?
Good.
Okay, good. Thank you. Mary, in looking forward, I know it may be too soon, but looking at what's available now that's coming out of the Congress, it appears, if I read some of it carefully enough, that a lot more money is, well, a greater percentage is going to go to small businesses. Have you seen anything that would help our town? It appeared to me that a number of small businesses had problems getting money than the last time around, and part of it was banks and part of it was process. Do you have any thoughts on that?
You know, my thought is that SBA is there to help everybody. Cape Cod Five, I know, was great in the first round, and I think they'll be even better. And I just, people shouldn't get discouraged. They should just keep trying, and hopefully, this round will be helpful to more people. But there definitely were a lot of people that received assistance from the first round.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
Mary, I also know that the state had a small business COVID relief grant that came out in October, but also, they've just come out with a sector-specific relief program through EmpoweringSmallBusinesses.org.
Right.
You might want to go on that website and sort of pass that around to your members. There was some infrastructure and food security grants that the state had put together. Those have passed, but I think the state's got money out there that they're trying to help small businesses.
Yeah, they definitely do, and we did communicate information about that within the last week or so.
Super. Okay, great. Cory, you're next. Cory, you're frozen. All right, there you are. Yes, I can hear you now.
All right. I'll make it quick before I freeze again. As a fellow merchant downtown, this was definitely a different season, and I think the community did very well to support the various restaurants and shops and services, and I appreciate that from a merchant's perspective. And on a personal note, I very much like the buoy tree. You know, I'm right in front of the triangle, and it was nice, a little touch this year, and I look forward to keeping it around, because I personally like it. So, thank you very much.
Got any buoys?
No, I don't. I'll find some.
We'll get, we'll find some. Any other questions from the board for either Mary or Susan? Okay, I'm hearing none. We appreciate your time and all the energy you've put forth this year with everything that's been going on with the town. I think it's really important that we have organizations like this that can support local business, but organizations that can support each other. I think you guys, you're a good example of that. Really appreciate it. So, we'll see you back here in a few months for another report. All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Take care tonight.
Thanks.
All right. So, our next discussion is Fiscal Year 2022 Budget Policy Discussion. It's our capital project prioritization, and this is going to give us an opportunity to discuss potential funding for capital projects as they relate to our Board of Selectmen's Goals and Objectives that we voted on November 24, 2020. I see Jill and Alex have popped into the room. They've been in the background, so I don't know who's kicking it off, but I'll turn it over to both of you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. So, I'll kick it off. Alex is going to do a PowerPoint presentation that will be interactive, so you'll be able to ask questions. We know the information that we provided you for the Capital Improvement Plan. You've all have seen it in Appendix G in the annual town warrant, and it's presented formally to you when we do the fiscal year operating and capital improvement plan, and that's still scheduled for January 17th, so 19th. So, there's still some work to do, but we wanted to be considerate of the board in that you've established your value statements, you've identified priorities for the community, and you wanted to check in as a result of your goal to prioritize capital projects. So, while Alex is going to go through a PowerPoint presentation, and we're going to use the criteria that was established through the call-in center, and we wanted to test it with you to see if it actually meets your goals. We've been really successful with annual requests based on best practices by the departments. It's about $18 million a year, and we ended up funding about $2 million, and that's under the Capital Improvement Plan. That's 9% of the town's operating budget, but also through separate... but also through separate warrant articles, and that's what we usually present to you, separate from the capital plan. And I think this year, what we want to do is just have an overall financial report for you to review for capital items, understanding that there are other warrant articles and funding for non-capital projects. And those, which we'll spend some time on at the meeting on January 12th relates to affordable housing and how to quantify those requests, either CPA or the potential refinement to the CPA law, as well as the average, I'm sorry, the median income amount for that funding for affordable and attainable housing. So that's more to come on this. And also the childcare voucher program. We had used 75,000 as an earmark, as a separate article over the last couple of years. It has been used to, it hasn't been exhausted. And so we'll come back with that too after we have this discussion on capital priorities. And then last, this isn't the final time that you'll see this. We'll have a couple of more meetings. And again, trying to figure out what's the best mechanism for you to review the projects and what categories you want to apply to it so that it meets your priorities and the community's priorities. So I'll let Alex get along with her presentation, and then we'll bring it back for your input and any questions you might have. So I'll turn it over to Alex.
Thank you, Jill. Yeah, I'm going to share my screen right now with the PowerPoint, so just bear with me while I go through this. And happy to take questions.
Alex, do you want to take questions as you go through the PowerPoint, or would you wait, rather prefer to wait to the end?
I usually like to take questions as I go through the PowerPoint. However, if there's a slide that's coming up that will answer it, I might defer it at the time.
Okay. All right, I'm just going to let the board, just if you have a question for Alex, simply just ask.
Okay, so everyone can see my screen?
Not yet, Alex.
Okay.
The 2020 curse of sharing screens.
I know. Yes, no?
No.
I'm trying a different way.
You're getting there. There it is.
All right. This isn't the prettiest way to share it, though. Okay, so you can see my screen, but now you see me and everything down here, right? Look at rid of me. Okay. So this is our FY 2022 Capital Prioritization Discussion for the board's review, initial review tonight. And going back, and as described in your agenda package today, we discussed sort of our capital improvement plan. And this will cover the five years, beginning in FY 2022 to FY 2026, as was in conjunction with the Collins Center Capital Prioritization CIP Plan that was done back beginning in 2018 and 2019. So again, we use the Collins Center to come up with rating criteria and other items to sort of prioritize and identify those things that are important to the town in prioritization and looking at our capital plan. So the first item that we did was to define and identify capital, then identify the funding sources, our evaluation criteria, which we'll get into, and to manage the plan. Oh, somebody took control of this. This is good. I want to go to my next one. Okay, so again, you know, a lot of these are listed in the report, but we'll go through some of these individually.
Alex, we're just seeing the title page right now, Alex. If somebody's taking control, they need to give it back to you.
All right, let me try something different here.
Okay, take your time.
I'm sorry.
No. This is our new normal.
Okay. All right, let's try this. Okay, can we see it now?
Yes, you can.
All right, this is the way I wanted to do it. Good.
Great.
Okay, so again, we just went through the slides. So this is again, the Capital Improvement Plan in conjunction with the Collins Center. We look to define and identify our capital, identify the funding sources, evaluation criteria, and then the management of the plan. And I'll run through these as we go through, go along. So capital, first the definition. The definition of capital is items that are greater than $10,000, up to 250,000, could be a little bit more than 250,000, depending on the nature of the item, such as a piece of equipment might qualify for the capital budget, that one article, rather than a separate warrant article. Capital is also typically items for which borrowing may be incurred. And that means that it has a useful life of greater than five years. So for this reason, you know, we've had dredging in the capital fund, as well as beach nourishment. Sometimes those are moved out as a standalone article because you can't borrow for beach nourishment. You don't know how long it's going to be there. It could be there for 10 years. It could be there for 10 days, depending. So then, as we go through capital, we identify the funding sources for the different capital items. For the capital budget, that standalone article for the FY 2022, the current year, moving forward, we pay as you go, which is the Chatham Practice. We use free cash, which is an available source of funds, as well as other available funds, such as Chapter 90 State Aid, the Waterways Improvement Fund, the PEG Access Fund, any available fund that will offset particular items that are directly related to those funding sources. Another funding source is a capital exclusion. This would be a one-time hit to the tax rate. This takes a separate town meeting vote, as well as a ballot vote at the, by the public. So again, capital exclusion, one-time hit to the tax rate, and it's not dead. It's just a one-time expense, as opposed to the debt exclusion, which is the next one that's listed. And that would be for larger projects that we've done along the way, usually for buildings, wastewater improvement, debt exclusion. And we try to lay out, you know, what that would mean to the taxpayer and the tax rate moving forward. And again, that takes the vote of town meeting, as well as a ballot vote. And then the third, the fourth funding source would be the tax levy, whether it's excess levy capacity or just built-in. We typically do not use this for the capital budget, as we use free cash. But we have used a tax levy for certain articles, as standalone articles to vote on by town meeting, because the taxpayer should be able to say, yes, I want to vote for this, and I know it's going to affect my tax rate and my tax bills. So that's another pay as you go, but it is directly affects the taxpayer. Chatham does have excess levy capacity, so we do not tax to the maximum amount that we could. We have about $2 million of excess levy capacity. But again, we give the voters the opportunity to vote on each of those impacts. Moving forward to the Collins Center, what was next is the evaluation considerations. So we have project review criteria, which are based on best practices. And those are items such as, does it reduce costs? What's the useful life, et cetera? And we'll run through these a little bit further on in the presentation. And then we have local policy goals. So these are the goals that the board has considered very important for Chatham, and we call that the Chatham Factor.
Hey, Alex, this is Peter.
Yes?
I know that each year, you look at, you go to the department heads and look at what their requirements are. How often do you update the Collins Criteria? I know you have all these worksheets that you use. Do that every year?
We do that every year. We review the, we use the project review criteria and the local policy goals for the items, especially the standalone, the larger items that we'll be, you know, introducing tonight. But we will do that for everything going forward. Because again, I think as was mentioned by a previous speaker, you know, we don't want this to get stale. Things that might have been important two or three years ago might not be as important right now. Things might have changed, or another project might have come that's more important, and then has risen to the top and is scored higher on the priority list.
Yeah, that's exactly correct. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. And again, I just wanted to point out that, you know, the Collins Center, when we first was presented to town staff, we felt that the local policy goals was very important, and the Chatham Factor was, should be a high priority in rating our capital projects. So moving forward to what some of these are, the project review criteria, and these all get different scores, is to preserve the town assets. And that's for facilities or for infrastructure, and then for parks only. Increase the effectiveness of government, I missed an S there. Financial sustainability, does it increase revenues, or does it add more costs? Reduce operating costs, and then community utilization. And whether that's, you know, year-round, full-time, seasonal, all those different, or whether it's just, you know, no community utilization, very used spread widely by the community. So that was one of those rating criterias. The local policy goals, community values, these are different, the different criteria. The Chatham Scale, balanced economic opportunities, cultural and recreational opportunities, youth and families, public safety, aesthetics and historic preservation, environmental sustainability and resiliency, and then public health. So that was the Chatham Factor. So then, if we went through some of our, applying the rating criteria to some of the items, that the standalone items that we're looking at for the FY 2022 and beyond capital budget, dredging scored the highest at 92 points, which makes sense, as we know dredging is very important to the town. The Council on Aging scored 85 points. And then the Replace the Sand Salt Storage Shed scored 75 points. And I'll run through some of the points for each of the criteria in the next few slides. So dredging, preserve town assets, a total points of seven. Increase the Effectiveness of Government, 15 points. Financial Sustainability, five points. Zero points for reduced operating costs, because obviously it has no effect on that. Community Utilization, 15 points. And Community Values, again, the Chatham Factor, this scored 50 points. And we, you know, expect to see that because we know that dredging is important to our community.
Alex, this is Dean.
Yes.
So these points that are allocated, are those subjectively determined by department heads, or the town manager, or yourself? Decide that preserving town assets is going to give seven points on this?
It's different boxes that we check when we go through, and I can run through what the criteria, an example of that. But again, it's not up to the department heads. If they do do this, I take the first look at it and say, well, you know, I don't think that this should be ranked in this category. And Jill and I do run through these, looking at it objectively, because if you, you know, again, you know, departments are all going to think that their, their project should get the highest point and score the highest when we're looking at all the departments sort of competing against each other. So this is, you know, when we check off certain boxes, there are certain points that are awarded.
So what I'm seeing here, what we're seeing here is the determination, I would suggest, at the highest level by the town manager and yourself?
Ah, yes.
And it might, it might be different from what individual selectmen think?
It could be.
So the public, for example.
But if we look at, you know, whether it's, you know, used year-round, highly used seasonally, so certain criteria, say, community utilization, could get, could score in two different categories. So because again, it's, and then we don't assign the points. It's checking off the boxes, and then the points are assigned. And there's only a maximum number of points in each of these categories.
Yeah, but within each box, is there a range of points that can be assigned? Or is it, once you determine that it's a community values box, that it's applicable, do you get 50 points?
No, you don't get 50 points for that. It's for how many different community values does it check off? So if we have community values that is culture and recreational, you'd get a certain number of points for that. If it's youth and families, you'd get an additional number of points for that. If it's environmental sustainability, you've got additional points for that. And I can show you one of these.
I don't need to drill down that. I just really want to understand the process. Because let's take one of the subcategories you just mentioned. Is it automatically, you know, three points, once you determine that the box is, the sub-box is checked? Or do you decide? Does the town manager decide it's three points? And that might differ from what somebody else might think.
No, if the box is...
Presentation of the Collins Center report, I thought it was good and everything. But it seems to me there is a lot of subjectivity to it. In practice.
Yeah. I'm sorry, Alex. I think for the first round, there is some subjectivity. But if you look at what Alex was talking about with, say, community utilization, you get zero points, used seasonally and frequently low public use. You would get five points. Or it would get five points if it's used year-round, limited public use, 10 points, used seasonally, highly used by the public, and a maximum of 15 points, used year-round, highly used by the public. So the scale is established through the Collins Center prioritization. And that's where we have, we mostly use this on the smaller cap items because dredging has been presented to the Board of Selectmen, and you've voted to move forward with a certain amount and place it on the warrant. So this is a little new for us to apply it to the single warrant articles versus the plan that's submitted, if I'm being clear about it. So in community values, there's a maximum that you could get of 75. And each, each section has a certain, has a certain value system. So like with the dredging, if I look at community values, whatever it hit, it got 50 out of a total of 75.
Okay, I think you answered my question, which was basically whether each sub criterion has a fixed number assigned to it, according to the protocol set forth in the Collins Report. And that's what I'm hearing your answer to that being yes.
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 Okay, thank you.
Okay, so moving on to the next item that we looked at was the Council on Aging. So, and this scored for preserving town assets, a total of 10 points. Increase the Effectiveness of Government, 30 points. Financial Sustainability, 20 points. Zero points for reducing operating costs. Community Utilization, 15 points, and Community Values, 10 points. So again, you can see some of the differences between different projects, even though they might be high-scoring projects. There's different ways of getting the scores based on the boxes that are checked. And then the Salt Sand Salt Storage Shed, again, another high-scoring project. Preserve Town Assets, 30 points. Increase the Effectiveness of Government, 15 points. Financial Sustainability, five points. Here, we did get reduced operating costs, 15 points. Community Utilization, zero points on this one, and Community Values, 10 points. So moving on from the evaluation, so again, the capital planning process. The departments prepare their capital project requests and submit them to myself and Jill. And then we review the request and evaluate against the criteria. And then we need to determine the resources available, and that's what... And that's what we're going to look at now. And then we finalize projects for inclusion in the plan and prepare it. So our funding sources. General fund pays you go, which is usually again for the capital article. General fund debt for the larger capital projects. Water fund surplus and water revenue are for those smaller water capital items. Water fund debt for the larger water capitals, such as the water treatment plant that was just funded a few years ago. And again, that's paid through by the water department. So no impact on the tax rate. And then also we look at grants and loan programs such as, you know, the community, are any of these projects eligible for community preservation funding? Chapter 90 funding. We now have the new Cape Cod Water Protection Collaborative Fund for sewer related items that we'll look at. And we always look for any outside grants that may be available to offset the impact to the taxpayer. So general fund debt, again, looking for items that are, you know, $250,000 or more. We try to limit the annual increase in debt service to a level that will not materially jeopardize the town's credit rating. And we also look at debt drop off. This has been, you know, something that's been used in Chatham for many years now. So for FY 2022, we have debt drop off of just on, just over 111,000. FY 2023, we do have debt drop off, 593,000. But depending on, you know, what debt is issued between now and then, that may decrease that amount. But that is what is scheduled for debt drop off. And I'm going to go into some slides on debt in the next few slides. So here's our debt service from FY 2017 through 2027. This is existing debt, not debt that is scheduled or forecast for any new projects. You can see in 2017, we were, you know, about 7.5 billion dollars. We've declined in the past few years. We've gone up for FY 2021 with additional wastewater being funded through the Clean Water Trust. And that's 0% interest loans. And then it does decline moving forward out through 2027, barring any issuance of new debt. I will come back to debt a little bit later in the presentation. So if you have any questions, we'll go over those in a little bit. Water fund surplus revenue, which is an available source of funds to fund water capital. The balance of water surplus, which is similar to free cash, although it doesn't have to be certified by the Department of Revenue. We had $786,000. So that's all that is available moving forward to fund water capital for FY 2022. So again, water capital have always been separate articles because they're funded by water revenues or water debt. For FY 2022 through FY 2026, there's 6.8 million dollars in project requests. And, excuse me, for FY 2022, there was 4.15 million dollars requested. And looking at that in further review, wells 10 and 11, permitting and construction of buildings, that probably will be pushed out to FY 2023 after talking to the DPW director. But again, that would be issuance of debt. Water main replacements, a request for 1 million dollars. We're looking to see if we can fund that full amount or a lesser amount. Because again, as I stated, we only have 786,000 dollars available. So we might want to decrease that and carry some forward. And then a training field well study for 50,000 dollars. So again, you know, we're moving through this process right now to see what is coming before the selectmen and what your priorities are. But again, probably that well 10 and 11 could be pushed out one year. And then looking at water fund debt. FY 2020 was the first year of the payment for the iron, excuse me, magnesium treatment plant. So that's declining now going forward. So we'll look to see when we can have additional water fund debt coming in. So again, we look at water fund debt just as we do general fund debt. Another big ticket item is our sewer capital or wastewater. So for FY 2022, we're looking at 13, just over 13 million dollars in requests. So these would be all separate articles. Probably the biggest single article is continuation of the wastewater for 7 million dollars. The next item is a belt filter press. Replacement of that for 4.5 million dollars. Rehab of the influence building at Lakeside, 350,000. And then replacement of the boilers at the plant, which might be able to be pushed out to a future year. So that probably will be pushed out to FY 2023. And then other smaller items in the capital budget, 960,000 dollars has been requested. But again, often those items will be pushed out to another year as we look to keep the capital budget within that 9% of our operating budget.
Hi, Alex, this is Jeff.
Hi.
How you doing? On the sewer capital then, on this slide, what, what, which of these expenses would potentially hit the tax rate?
Well, they would all be borrowing.
All borrowings.
I would think that they would all be borrowing unless we wanted to fund the rehab of the influence building through a one time hit to the tax rate.
The wastewater article for 7 million, that's just standard expansion, if you will, of our overall project, our overall effort, our decades long effort.
Yeah.
And the belt filter press, that is for the wastewater treatment plant itself?
That is for the replacement of the belt filter press in the wastewater treatment plant. There are, there currently are two. One is not operational and the other one is, I guess, has, has some issues. So if it goes down, it could jeopardize the ability, or actually could increase our costs to have to get rid of some of that sludge. At least that's how I understand it. And I know DPW Director Temple and Dr. Duncanson are both on the call that could probably answer in more detail what that is for. But again, that was considered to be, you know, a priority because it would jeopardize the treatment of wastewater sludge, as I understand it.
Yeah, I think we need to know a little bit more, a lot more about that. You know, that's the first time I, I've heard of it or at least remember hearing about it. But that's a big number, that, you know, that's a big number. And then, you know, potentially, you know, if we're to go, then it sounds like we should really scrutinize the expenditure fairly carefully because it sounds as if it does fail, it would not be a good, a good thing. So need to know a little bit more about that one. And then on top of all that, there's a 960,000 dollar request for FY 2022 capital in sewer.
Yes, and some of those items can be postponed, you know, or pushed out to another year. You know, we look at things. There's electronic upgrades that can be pushed out to FY 2023. As I said, the boilers can be pushed out. The rehab of the septicage building at Lakeside could be pushed out one year. And then we have the continuation of the ultraviolet disinfection upgrade as well as just original repairs to the original sewer system. So those are some of those items. But again, we'll be presenting that when we go through the annual capital article. So.
Just one quick follow up and I'll hush. But so if you had a magic wand and the tax rate and/or the taking on of new debt wasn't an issue, you'd be requesting or the town would be requesting 13,160,000? If you had, you know, again.
Yeah, I, you know, again, we, we look at this because we have a lot of different competing requests from all the departments. So, you know, as I said, you know, we're looking to, you know, push some of these out for next year. But again, that increases next year's costs, so.
No, I understand you're trying to create a context or you're showing us some numbers here, I get it. But again, if you had a magic wand, it'd be 13,000.
Yeah, and you know, I think one of the, and if I can move on to the next slide because I think this is important to demonstrate is that, you know, for the 7 million dollars that we're requesting for the wastewater authorization. As you might recall, when we first approved wastewater back in 2009 for 59.5 million dollars, the goal was to have authorizations every two years for the continuation. So we took a pause from 2009 to 2013. And then in the next year, 2014, we approved the 17.5 million. Then we waited three years and approved 31 million. And then two years, 7.1. And now, two years later, for the annual town meeting 2021, we're looking at 7 million dollars again for a new debt issuance. And I know the comment was made to see how much was left. And, you know, this is one of the reasons why I wanted to point out what we've had. So a total of 130 million has been approved out of the original, I believe it was 250 million dollar plan back in 2009. And right now, our authorized and unissued debt as of June 30th for wastewater is just under 5 million dollars. 4,991, 91,477 dollars. So, you know, we've used a lot of it. And it's important to note too, that most of this is through the Clean Water Trust at 0% interest loans. And I'll, I have a slide on that in a few slides.
Thank you.
So again, this is our wastewater debt, existing debt. And you can see where it's declining. And this debt does go out to FY 2049, I believe. So some of the debt issuances for wastewater, USDA loans from the very beginning, 19.5 million at 2.75% interest. We have 52.5 million dollars in 0% interest loans through the Clean Water Trust. And then some of the smaller issues, the items that are not, do not qualify for those 0%, 2.4 million dollars, 2.8% interest wastewater. And then, you know, 1.24 and the TIC is true interest cost. So again, smaller amounts. The greatest one is 3.1 for wastewater issuance in 2015 for 180,000. And I also want to point out here too that we did receive grants from the USDA in the amount of 19,936,011 dollars. So the town has invested quite heavily in wastewater. And I'm happy to answer any questions. At this point, I'm going to take a pause.
Alex.
Any questions from, go ahead, Dean.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, my understanding is that of those items that we have already built into this program, we are eligible for money from the Clean Water, the Cape Cod Clean Water Trust or whatever it's called. Dr. Duncanson is our representative on that. That, that's being funded out of this through the short term rental tax. So some of these, we're eligible to recoup some, some of our investment here. I believe. They're still in the process of establishing the criteria and how they're going to implement that. But we should be able to get some money.
That's correct. And I've sat in on one of those meetings as well as we're moving through to see, you know, if we can, one, either offset and not have to borrow, which is always a good thing, or pay for some of the debt service that we have out there. But again, you know, looking at it, if we can get the 0% interest loans and the Cape Cod Water Protection Collaborative Fund would help pay for that, that would be, you know, beneficial to the town. So that is an available source of funds that we are looking at.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Alex. Jeff, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Shereen, and thanks, Alex. So, you know, water and wastewater is like a whole different little bucket of, of interest. I should say of expenditures and interest. And I echo the sentiments of Ms. Gibbs, who asked for kind of a deeper dive. It, it, it's an enormous expenditure and a wonderful investment that we made in this town. But it's important to know what we've invested and what we, what the need is going forward, what the plans are going forward. It's been incredibly well financed, incredibly well financed. But it's important for us to know kind of what's on the plate, not only for 2022, but also what's on the plate going forward. Number one comment. So I, I, I'm struggling, I mean, I love this stuff, but I'm struggling with how to bucket some of these expenditures. And I'll have more to say later on. But wastewater and wastewater is arguably our largest or is our largest, I think, overall expenditure over decades and maybe arguably our most important. However, it's really important, I think, that we understand where we stand with respect to that investment, which includes how many people we've hooked up to our wastewater system. Because I think, I think we should be more aggressive there, number one. And if folks are having difficulty finding financing or difficulty coming up with the rather large expenditures to hook up and in some cases, then we need to think creatively about getting them some kind of mechanism to finance these hookups. And I know there's some out there with the county, et cetera, but I think people still are struggling, so. Those are my comments on water and wastewater. This is, these are big numbers. And I think it's important that we really understand what we've invested, how we've invested, what we're demanding going forward and how we plan to finance that going forward as well. It's, and I, obviously, I think we ought to continue to do it, but at, at, at the best advantage we can possibly bring to bear and ensuring that we get return on our money as well. Never mind the fact that we're keeping our water clean, et cetera. It's, it's a very, very important investment that we're making in the town and it's huge. Thank you. That's, anyway, and I, I sort of want to bucket this stuff because water and wastewater in and of itself is one whole big bucket. How it's financed, what, what its impact is for our debt structure and/or the tax rate longer term. It's its own big baby. Thanks, Alex. Thanks for the patience, everybody.
Great, thanks, Jeff. Good points. Go ahead.
Okay, well, thank you, Selectman Dykens, because here's the next slide for existing and potential debt. And again, I have to put a caveat here because many of these have not been approved. So if we're looking at items, and I've tried to make this colorful so you can see that, you know, this red checkered item is future wastewater. So that is based on our original plan moving forward to sewer the town for phase one. So again, you know, moving all the way out to FY 2050, which wastewater debt's the only thing out there right now. It's the only thing we're contemplating. We do have, you know, future waterfront issues based on that approval that we have for the waterfront infrastructure. We have these yellow, which is proposed transfer station. We have a light blue, which is future transfer station. And so proposed has not been approved yet. We haven't even brought it to town meeting. We have a proposed COA, which is this gray checkered board up here on top. Again, has not been approved yet. So these numbers could change. And this is our best guesstimate at this time as to what interest rates will be. I'm always very conservative when I'm looking at my interest rates. So I've built in, I think, 3.5%, although interest rates are way below that right now. And you can see here where we went up for FY 2021, which is this third column over here. And that was due to financing, again, wastewater through the Clean Water Trust at 0%. So just, you know, this is something we look at all the time. And as we approve items, we try to put them in and categorize them going forward. And I did categorize here. The dark is our buildings. The white here is our land. And the red is waterfront roads and the small gray. And then, as I said, wastewater and that light blue that is already existing debt. So again, timing of debt issuance and what's approved, this could change. And we'll move into what timing of debt issuance means. Because, just because we approve a debt issuance, say for 7 million dollars for wastewater or something for the Council on Aging, doesn't mean that it will hit the tax rate the next year. So we get the project approval at town meeting. We have a public bidding process. So that's, make sure that that comes in within the appropriation. Once we accept the public bids, then we begin the construction process. And that could be one or two years, depending on the project. During the construction process, we'll probably go out for short term borrowing, which we pay interest only. So very little impact to the taxpayer. And then depending on the timing, we look to issue long term debt. And that, usually we do that, we look at with our, in consultation with our financial advisors, what the trends are in the financing, you know, is it a good time to go out? How do we put that in? When is it going to hit our debt service budget? Can we fit it in? Can we fit it in? So we look at debt drop-off so we don't have a negative impact. And then market trends and because, and then bundling all of our long-term debt together because it does cost us to go out for issuance of debt. So again, you know, we might approve something at town meeting in May of 2021, and it might not even hit the tax rate until 2023 or 2024. So it all depends on how we go through that. So I'm happy to answer any questions on this.
Any questions for Alex? Okay, go ahead.
So looking at our potential capital articles and some of the funding sources. And then you can see on the left-hand side here, we have the rating criteria. So again, the dredging program, 92 points. Funding source would probably be free cash or the tax levy. Council on Aging, this was the most recent number. We had had the 8.6 million. That would be a debt exclusion that scored 85 points. The Eldridge Library Construction, the Shell, 510,000. Wastewater, continued expansion, debt exclusion. The Eldridge Garage Property Site, something that the board had identified. Again, we don't know the amount that that would be right now. And that could possibly be offset, we'd probably issue debt, but it could be offset by some CPA funds. Replace the sand salt shore shed. The Eldridge Library Site master planned. So again, I won't run through all these, but these are just the items that we had seen, the 18 items, for examples. And these are listed in your packet as well. So moving forward, for some of the items that the board needs to review, the Council on Aging, design and construction, again, the amount to be determined. Eldridge Library envelope, the Shell repairs, 510,000. The Eldridge Library Site, 645,000. As you recall, we did repurpose 443,000 from that article previously to go to the Shell repairs this year. Stormwater drainage for $4.5 million. And then, again, the Eldridge Garage Property, which would, to be determined the amount. And more items for review, transfer station improvements. You will recall that we funded 470,000 for this current fiscal year for those safety items. But again, there's additional, that was only the immediate repairs that needed to be done. So we'll look at that. Dredging for $300,000. The replacement of the sand salt, sand salt shed for 1.6. The belt filter press, which we talked about, and wastewater, which we talked about. Again, the transfer station improvements, the board had reviewed those back in February of 2019. And again, the 470,000 was just the short-term to get us through. So that's why that's here again this year. And then back to, again, all these items will have something and may have impact on our existing and potential debt. But this is where I'll leave it for now, for the larger projects. And then, in consideration of that, we also want to look at the other considerations of items that are programmed into the capital but have not been funded. The waterfront infrastructure bond projects. As Jill had mentioned, the childcare voucher program. And then the board's consideration of some of the affordable housing efforts. We do have some CPC applications for affordable housing as well as the CPA special legislation that will, the meeting, the board will be discussing on January 12th. And that's what I have tonight.
Okay, Alex, thank you very much. I'm sure we'll have some more questions. Dean, I'm looking for input, so I guess Dean's hand is raised. And then Peter, Jeff. Go ahead, Dean. Dean, I think you might be muted.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to start with a question to either you or the town manager, but I do want to commend Alex and Jill for a very imaginative and detailed presentation. But was this presentation tonight meant to be in response to the agenda item request that Selectmen Dykens and I made for a prioritization of large capital projects in town? Because it's not quite what I was certainly looking for.
Well, I think what we were trying to do is look at items through the lens of the community, get a start of a conversation going and move it forward. So in organizing it, maybe Jill can give a little better feedback to where we're going.
Yeah, we, we saw this as an initial discussion as we're still fine-tuning. We're working on a couple of things at the same time. So the FY 22 operating budget, FY 22 capital plan. And we are just receiving all the requests for the standalone warrant articles. So in talking with the chair, we thought we would have this initial discussion that we could present at least the capital plan, which is that, that 9% of the operating budget that we vote as, is a separate article as a whole. And then we can move on through there. We have all of basically January scheduled for warrant articles and project reviews that we can do. But we thought that at least this could be an initial discussion. And then if the board had wanted to go into the Collins Center criteria, we were, I think we're more focused on the criteria. So I apologize if it's not what you expected. As you can see how the projects could be rated and using it, since this is the first time that we would use them for the warrant articles.
No, I appreciate that. And I think this tonight will be a good building block for our analysis of the budget going forward as we, as we build that budget and present it to the Finance Committee and to town meeting. But I guess, when, when I first brought up the idea of prioritizing, what I had in mind was to try to respond to community concerns that the town was doing too much too fast. And I think it, it kind of hit a peak when we were talking about the Upweller Project. And I, I think I was the sole negative vote at one point for, in terms of wanting to delay that because I thought we, we just had too much going on. And I, I, I understand the Collins, you know, protocol. And I think it's good for, for the development of the budget for FY 22 and, and years going forward from that. But what I was looking at, trying to come up with, is for the Selectmen to receive a list of all the large projects or proposals that we've been talking about from meeting to meeting, some of which are in the list of 17 that you have, but some are not. Some are on that last slide, like affordable housing, attainable housing. We haven't, we don't have on there the, the Crow Road Intersection Project, which I understand at some point, if it were to go forward, would become a state expenditure and not a town expenditure. But thus far, it is, is the town expenditure. And another item, it's not really a capital item. We don't know what it's going to be, but it's the Chatham Elementary School. And even just on the operational side, we're talking 600, $800,000. So I was looking for a list like that. And for the Selectmen, using whatever criteria we might want to come up with, and just to throw something out raw, you know, is, is it needed? What is, can we afford it? Do the people want it? And make our assessments. And so I was a little bit disappointed, but I, I appreciate what you've said, Jill, in terms of, Shereen, what, you know, this is sort of the kickoff. I did have a conversation, separate conversations with the chair and the vice chair of the Finance Committee. And the chair of the Finance Committee authorized me today to basically indicate similar thoughts on his part because he was looking for something, speaking for himself, not for his committee, a little more comprehensive and sort of multi-year. I know you're talking about a five-year window here. And he did send a memo around to us, to me and, and to you, which we look forward to the other, the other Selectmen for their information. I would just say one other thing. In the, in the packet, and I don't know whether Alex or you intend to talk about it, there are the waterfront projects, which, which there's an $11 million authorization. And I guess I just really want to make the point, this relates to debt drop-off. I don't think we can, can or should look at the waterfront projects as separate with their own, within their own silo. Because if you decide that we're going to go forward with an Upweller and it's going to cost whatever it is, let's say $4 million, that's going to affect the availability of debt drop-off. It will limit the ability to build a senior center or do something else without seriously impacting the, the tax rate. So I just really think it all, it all has to be looked at together. And I think we, as a town, and the Selectmen have to say, these are the things we consider important, and this is how we rank them. And I might come up with a different ranking than the Collins Center. Where, I mean, I, I would not have put dredging as number one. And I think it was kind of shocking to see the, the application of the Collins Center formula on the senior center when, in the category of, was it community values? It was a pretty low score. And I, I, I'm sure you applied it according to the way it's supposed to be, be applied. But I, I think there is sort of, I, I just really would like to see the town, and maybe I'm the only one here that feels this way, that the Selectmen should step back and say, hey, these are the big projects which are being proposed, talked about, which has, which have everybody concerned. This is how we rate them. And then, and then it would follow that in the preparation of the budget, the town manager, the finance director. And then ultimately, town meeting would determine how we're going to finance them going forward. So those are my sort of broad comments about it. Again, I very much appreciate what you've done. I was sort of thinking we were going to get something a little different tonight, but I understand we're just beginning the process. Thank you.
So this being the introductory conversation, and I totally appreciate what you're saying in the bigger, broader picture. To lay everything out on, at once, didn't seem like it was the, the way to go right now. But it was more of a broader introduction, introduction to the conversation tonight. The Collins Center, using that as an example, is a matter of discussion, obviously, Dean, it is. And there might be a bigger, a Chatham factor or COVID factor that gets inclusive into the conversation. We're going to be talking about the affordable housing initiatives next week, that, or the following week, the 12th. It's, it's clearly obvious in the conversations that this, this, this board has had that we're looking at those as big priorities going forward. We just felt this was a start. But I appreciate that you wanted to put it in a bigger context. I'm not sure how, you know, that, I'm not sure. I guess we're taking it more of a piecemeal effect that there might have been a better approach to it. But, but we can look at it, regroup if we need to. But let's continue the conversation tonight and see where we land, if that's okay with you.
Certainly is, Shereen.
Okay. All right. So we'll move on to Peter, unless you have anything else you need to add, Dean.
No.
Okay. All right, go ahead, Pete.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Shereen. In a way, I'm going to agree with, with, with Dean. And I'm going to put it in a different context. And I, and I, and I think it's important that, that we look at the Collins, any kind of a, an organization or a way to, to rate something and put it in its proper perspective. The numbers don't count because it's a relative. I think that the, the way that the process is set up is good. It's Collins, it's comprehensive. It looks at relative scoring and takes sub-elements and all that kind of stuff. But so we're looking at capital risk. I, I didn't expect that we would get a full-blown look at what's, what we should be looking at. And I kind of, going to go back to something that, that Jeff mentioned. What we're seeing here is a piece of, of an immediate, a, a piece of the pie. And I think it was important that we get through this part of it, not only for us, but also for the, the community at large to, because it's important to understand how we look at capital. And that's a piece of, of capital, how at least the numbers come out in some respect. Yeah, you can argue about what they are, but they're, they're relative numbers. And, and I think, I'm going to go back to what I talked about as a, as, as, as for an agenda item. If we're going to decide what we want to do, I think as a board, which I think we should do, we have to put it in a context of where we want to see, where we believe the town of Chatham should go in the future. And, and let me get into that too much yet. It is our job to balance all those issues that, that Dean was talking about. I think, and I, in, in my mind, I'd like to see us look at all of these capital projects and, and put them into separate buckets. And I, I like that word that Jeff used, but I, I put it as categories or priorities. And we're going to find out, yes, we're, we're going to have like something that says it's a people category, or it's an infrastructure category. It's a municipal infrastructure or coastal resiliency. And what we're going to find out is what? We have a whole bunch of stuff that we need that's important. And, and there are important ones across the board. And then we have to look at that as how it's going to affect the future of our town. I believe. And that's, that's, that's a simple way of looking at it. But if we want our community to be something other than, I said, a retirement and a second homeowner, then we're going to have to put our, our priorities and our, our, our funding towards that. Doesn't mean that we forget everything else. I mean, we have, you know, you, you, you make a plan. And it means you're making a plan because you're deciding on actions that you want to reach a goal or a vision. And, and that's why you plan. But to be honest, you know, it's execution that's 10 points for every strategy that you have. And execution starts with the budget. So the budget proposal we put out there has to be forward-looking. Most of what I see in, in the Collins section, when they talk about criteria, has all to do with in, looking inward. And then we get into the other categories that I'm glad that the town has done and look at what could be the future. So, yeah, I agree. We're going to need to make some tough decisions. But I think the, the, the standard bearer that we're going to have to look at is where we go in the future, as far as I'm concerned. And, and I think what we see is, what we don't see is a capital and financial plan that lays out how certain programs could be set out in the future. We see the debt that is going to be there. But the tough part will be, where do we draw the line? Or how do we decide which projects we delay and which we don't? And when they could be put in and when they would start? Start one program, dredging this year, and we can put off sewers to another year. What does that mean? Does it start in which fiscal year? I got the impression that that's what we're going to get as we move ahead. So I guess that's, that's all I'll say for now. I do have some other comments, but I'll wait. Thank you.
Okay. All right, Pete. Jeff?
Yeah, thank you, Shereen. At the risk of being long-winded here, you know, our, our operating capital budgets are an expression of our priorities. And the capital budget has a longer life and it's more of an expression of our vision because it has, we're making bigger bets for a longer period of time. And we really are shaping the course of the town going forward. Where I struggle a little bit is, and there are way too many competing priorities for limited capital. So, you know, it's our job to say, hey, we're going to meet out projects that we think are most important. And hopefully, we get the town to agree and to support them at town meeting, et cetera. But I, I've made a stab at, because where I lose it a little bit is getting, is the enormity of the task. So I've tried, I have tried to bucket this up a little bit, and I want to share those buckets with you this evening. The first one is the one I've already spoken to, which is water and wastewater. And the reason why I think it's important that we bucket it up because there are different funding sources for each one of these buckets and potentially different funding sources. So we need to know what we've got available currently and what we're going to encumber the town going forward, should we support these various incentive projects. Now, we baked in already into the water and wastewater, you know, budget, huge amounts of money. If you looked at, at that biography that Alex just showed, the, the blue and the, and the, and the thatched pink, was that's the lion's share of the money, both presently and going forward. So that's a very important bucket that we need to do a deeper dive on and really understand where we are today. And that would include pumps- And that would include pump stations, expansions, infrastructure, investments, et cetera. The second bucket that I have is what, and Peter referred to it, I call a quality of life bucket. And this is a very important bucket. This is the one that, that draws all the public interest, a lot of the public interest, which it includes, and I have my number one, and I have ranked them a bit for this evening. Number one, what are we doing with the elementary school and the additional expense potentially coming forward in 2022? We spend X amount of dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars there, certainly going to impact what we might have available or be thinking about available for capital. And the second on my list is affordable and attainable housing, making an investment there. They may have very different funding sources. It may not impact, you know, the operating budget and or the capital budget next year, but it may in the future. So if we're going to make a big bet now, we're also making a big bet in the future. And the third I have is the council on aging, because it's been 10 years or 14 years in the making, and it's been such a subject and object of, of interest throughout the town. It's high up in my ranking list as well for input, support, or not, as the case may be. And also in that quality of life bucket, I have the Eldridge Library, Eldridge Garage, Crow Road, transfer station. Now, I mean, some of that stuff may spill over into the DPW area or not, but that's the quality of life, my quality of life bucket. Then we have a waterfront infrastructure bucket that we've already prefunded, if you will, we bonded, but we still do need to prioritize inside that bucket those, those projects we'd like to do most there. And we have got a great pack, it was in our package, it was a great presentation, but we have continuing needs at the fish pier, that south jog is going to, we got to do something about that. We have Ryder's Cove. We have a question on the upweller and the Mitchell River, you know, access to the Mitchell River landing. I may not have got everything there. But then we have a large operating expenses like the salt shed, you know, dredging, I include dredging in there as well, and then large capital, one-time capital purchases such as pumper trucks, et cetera. But I have, I have a fifth bucket too, that I want to talk about, not necessarily in depth tonight, but I've mentioned it before and I'll keep mentioning it, which is new sources of revenue for the town. Paid parking. I think we need to really investigate paid parking. We need to see if we can redirect those CPA monies to affordable housing. I'd like to float the notion of a transfer tax on real estate. I know that the island of Nantucket has done it and other places have done it, and I'd like to see what kind of an appetite this board and or the public might have for a transfer tax that would be taxed upon the transfer of property here in town. I think we need to have more tie-ins to our wastewater system. We made an extraordinarily large investment in our wastewater system. I'd like to know how many tie-ins we have had, how many more we could have, and if folks are having difficulty financing those tie-ins, which are at times extremely exorbitant, I'd like to know how we might be able to help, help them out. And then I want to remind folks that we have new sources of revenue in terms of a short-term rental, rentals, et cetera. So all that stuff, those buckets, those five expense buckets and four or five expense buckets and that revenue bucket, all translate into an overall capital plan, and the funding sources are different for every bucket. And that's where I lose it a little bit. That's where I want to see a little bit more meat on the bone in terms of how we finance these, these projects. First of all, how do we prioritize them? If we were to prioritize them as worthy of investment, how we finance them going forward? And then I want to know what the impact is on the tax rate, on our taxpayers, et cetera. I'm sure they're extremely interested in, in that endeavor. And many of these things are multi-year. It's not like we're buying everything all in one year. So we need to know how they stretch out over a number of years, as Stephen Daniel has noted in his, his memo to us, you know, today. So, you know, we really, we're kind of, we are at a place in the town where we want to make some big bets here and make some major investments that will, will affect how we shape, what our vision for this town is and how we shape this town going forward, that will have an impact on our tax rate and where we're investing. So these conversations need to be near and dear and deep. And I think we do need to reach out to our public and get, and get their senses and sensibilities. And really, we can't lose sight of the fact that we have, I think, major bets to make for our young people and our old people in town going forward, and, and in our infrastructure as well. I'll stop there. But I bucket it only to try to get a sense, a handle on what the buckets are and what those funding sources are, because I think that's helpful. It's helpful for me. Thank you.
Jeff, I agree with your bucket assessments, and I would drill down on some of the working waterfront and include economic development into that.
Yes.
And throw the dredging back into that, because it sort of ties into the economic development and the blue economy factor. Are you thinking that you'd want to prioritize the buckets first and then drill down into the projects? Is that your thought?
I don't see how we can't.
Okay.
You know, I don't see how we can't.
How we can or can't?
Can't, I don't see how we can't. We have to.
Yeah.
We have. There's just too many things we want to do that we, and we've been together now for a while, and we, we've had these conversations, but there are too many things we want to do as a board of selectmen, never mind as a town, that we could possibly afford. We just can't afford every.
I get you. All right. I, I mean, I, it makes, it makes enormous sense to, to have the conversation and, and guide it in this capacity, and maybe we can moving forward, or we should moving forward. Let's put it that way. Corey, you have your hand up.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I know this is sort of a much broader discussion that's going to get, you know, hammered down as we move forward, you know, and I think Jeff's suggestion of the bucket is quite productive, actually. I mean, we have a very long list of things. We need to kind of look, you know, 10 years, 15 years out forward. Where do we want this community to be? What is our vision moving forward? What, you know, what we want to see? What direction are we heading in? I mean, dredging is always going to be an element in our coastal, in the coastal community. We accept that. You know, I would really like to see the council of aging project come to some kind of conclusion. You know, you know, we started this, you know, at a six million dollar project, we're pushing nine million now. And that's, that's absent any cost for any land out there. So, I mean, and, you know, depending on how long we push this forward, that cost could continue to go up, assuming we use the same type of facility. So, you know, I'd like to kind of, kind of get that to conclusion. You know, the Eldridge Garage, I mean, I'm sorry, the Eldridge Library, we've taken funds from them before, and we've kind of, you know, they've been good stewards in putting off some of their projects. So I'd like to, you know, as a community, be good and do good faith and finish off some of the libraries projects that have been, you know, in the work for quite some time. You know, the, when it comes to the water problem issues, you know, I would like to understand a little bit. And now granted, this year has been totally different, but where our pumpage stands, you know, excluding kind of this year, but I think this is going to be a different factor. But I've talked to a lot of people, seems to be a lot of people going on their own wells. So I don't know if that is actual fact, how that is adjusted to what the town's demand is going to be. Will it impact the need from us to do anything to any of the wells sooner than later? Can we push things off? We may not have to do them for quite some time. And that's just going to be data driven, but I'd like to understand that a little bit better. You know, you've got little, you've got smaller items like, you know, we have the Coast Guard float dock at Old Mill Boat Yards, it's a half a million dollar, you know, tag. The Waterway User Fund is the source for it. But, you know, I, I'd like to, you know, I've heard different rumblings, and I don't know what's fact and fiction, but I like to do a little homework and find out if there's other funding mechanisms for such a thing for the Coast Guard, because, you know, they are kind of a first responder type category. And if there are some funding mechanisms out there that could assist us in some of that, certainly worth looking into, whether they're available now or potentially down in the future, I want to keep that option open to us. I am all in on the, on the elementary school. That's no big secret there. Affordable attainable housing, I'm all in, and I want to be very aggressive with that. That is, that is kind of the, the big step forward for what I see as our future as a community. So I'm, I'm all on board on that. Also, frankly, we've got to have a little category for any kind of, and I'm going to use the term new items, because for, for one reason or other, things sneak up on us. And that's to, you know, something else has dropped in our lap that, that has a pretty hefty price tag. I mean, we've, you know, mother nature's battling our outer beaches, and, you know, we don't know what's going to happen, whether we have to do something from a dredging slash, you know, structure, jetties, groins, something like that source, isn't going to be an inexpensive process, and it's going to take fair amount of time permanently to do any of this kind of stuff, if there's even an appetite for it. So there's a lot of, you know, looking forward to all these items. You know, we have a hefty list, we definitely do, limited funds. And I want to balance being able to be aggressive in certain areas, but not bite off more than we can choose, so we can manage them as productively as possible and make sure they're done efficiently for those that we choose to prioritize. So it's going to be a very, a longer discussion for sure than, than this is tonight. But I do think we, you know, I can support the bucket concept of trying to chunk these things out and, you know, break down those, those discussions a little bit further, and then, you know, carving up more details and moving forward, because I think, I think we've, you know, we've talked about a lot of these before, and I think we can, we can, we can get this prioritization a little bit further down the road. And, you know, obviously add the missing pieces that aren't in this packet tonight, because, you know, there's a lot more than what is in our package tonight that we need to discuss. So, yeah, I look forward to further discussion.
Okay. Thanks, Corey. All right, let's bring it back. Peter, did you have anything else you wanted to add? You said you had some more that you wanted to say.
No, it was, it was, it was pretty well covered. I was, I was looking at, I called it categories, and I, and I, and I think Jeff did a nice job of, of laying that out. No, thank you.
Okay. Dean?
Yeah, I just really wanted to address the bucket idea that Jeff laid out, and I respect, I respect Jeff, how you categorize these and assigned different projects and proposals to different buckets. And I liked your quality of life bucket, but in the end, an item that's high priority when in one bucket is going to compete with a high priority item in another bucket. So at some point, you have to put them all together, or you take the highest priority ones in each bucket, and you put them on a list all by, all together, and then you decide this is more important. This dredging or whatever here is more important than the elementary school or whatever. But that's, I just don't think you can look at these, and then, and probably that's not what you were proposing in silos. And I certainly also applaud that you brought forward a bucket on, 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 on resources like paid parking, which I, I support. And I think we should, we should try to get that in place sooner rather than later, because there's a lot of money we're losing, potentially, in terms of being able to fund some of these. So I just really wanted to add that mention to the, to the discussion about categorizing things. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Dean. Yeah, I, Jill, go ahead. Jill?
Thank you. So we have all of the raw data that, that the board has talked about, and it's just a matter of trying to put it in a format that would be easy for you to use. So, because when we do our, our capital projects requests, the form is one page only with pictures and everything, and it has that detail that I think that you want, but it, it could be, you know, six inches thick in a notebook for you. So that's what we're, so I heard everything, Alex and I heard everything that the board had said, and I think it's really helpful for us, because we were, we were, it's overwhelming the amount of data that we have, and to hear the board's discussion about how to maybe just categorize it is something that, that's very doable. And what's always challenging for us is Alex and I work backwards. We also, we look at the available funding, and then we've been trying to put the, the items together that way. So this is a pretty cool exercise for us to just get it out there. So we can certainly do that, and I'll, I'll try to figure out how soon we can get back to you, as I know there's a couple of cancellations on upcoming agenda items. And then just want to talk a little bit more about revenues and how quickly I can get this back to the board. I just had a question for Jeff. How, how deep do you want us to go in, in our research of what other towns do? Or is it an inventory of parking spaces and, and how that could be applied for paid parking? If you could just give me a little more insight to that, I think we could have a quick turnaround.
Yeah, I know, and there's a, there's an investment to be made to, to get to paid parking. So I think we need to do some research on what kind of investment, you know, what kind of investment we need to make before we get a return, then also a projection of what we, what those, that investment will return. You know, and I don't know if you could even do it for next summer, but, you know, as soon as we possibly can. I think we're, I do think we're missing the boat on paid parking. And then I'm interested in this transfer tax as a concept. I, again, I've spoken to a few people about it in other, most notably Nantucket nearby, but other, you know, Manhattan, Brooklyn have this transfer tax on real estate transfers, and it can generate an awful lot of money, but I would, I would earmark that for affordable and attainable housing. I'm not looking to put that into the general fund of the town, I'm looking to have that earmark for affordable and attainable housing, which I think is most appropriate. But again, I have some homework to do there, and I promised you that, and I just haven't gotten to it. But I think there are models out there that we can model ourselves after, if you will. But I think it's important to start to broach the subject and get feedback from folks, both positive and negative. I know folks want more detail, and hopefully we can get them some. And then the tie-ins on the wastewater, I think, I think we have that data, and I think, I think, you know, I think there are issues with respect to folks tying in because it's too expensive, especially if they have really difficult lots and they're far away, and, you know, people want to tie in, but it costs them tens of thousands of dollars, 30, 40 grand to tie into the, you know, sewer, depending if they need a grinder pump and, and, you know, this and that, it's expensive. So if, you know, I know the county has a, you know, has a program, but I'm not so sure it's used that much. I guess we need to do a little research there, do more research there. You know, I guess that's it. I'm interested to see if we get any, any traction up, up at Capitol Hill on our effort to redirect CPA funds. That'd be great too. But I think we, I need to look at the revenue side of the equation. We certainly have enough places where we want to spend money, both, you know, and really long-term spend too. I mean, we want to make major investments, so I think we're going to need some revenues to offset those investments as we go forward.
Jeff, one of the priorities for 365 was the sewer hookup of finding subsidies for, for, to help people do that. We had a pretty lengthy discussion on that. As far as the transfer tax earmarking to affordable or attainable funding, you know, in two weeks, we're going to have a conversation about some of the, some of this. And part of the discussion is how to possibly fund a, an attainable housing, you know, trust of some sort. So get your homework done earlier than later, if you can do that.
Sure.
Okay. Peter?
No, just a quick one. You mentioned the 365, but I'd also mention that I remember a number of years ago that the parking issue came up, and I thought a study was done within community development. This is back before Katie, and there was, you know, there was obviously some in favor and some that weren't. But, but I thought a lot of, there was a considerable amount of data that was looked at, especially from comparing it to other, other kinds of towns such as us, where most of them have some sort of paid parking. I mean, you need to hold everything, but it was, it was, it was, at that time, a considerable amount of money that, that, that you were looking at. Done properly, and you could do it electronically and all of that kind of stuff. I don't remember the details now, but, but I do remember that there was something put up. Whatever that's worth, Jake.
We did, and we used a portion of that study or part of it to do the signage and wayfinding for available parking. So, but yeah, definitely we can take that off the shelf. And I know there's been a lot of advancements in paid parking, especially with smartphones. So, and part of what we've been able to do, what we hopefully will do for the Eldridge Garage property, will utilize some of that as well.
Okay, further discussion? Any, any further discussion? Jill, do you have some good guidance here so far, or?
I have great guidance, and I just need to figure out the best way to do it. And it might, it might need to be a work session, but I, it's hope virtually, I just need to make sure I get you guys the material so that you can follow along. So, yeah, I'll reconnect with Alex, and we'll find a place to get the information out to you and put it on an agenda as quickly as possible.
Would, would the board be amenable to a working session or of some sort if we needed to do an exercise in that? Would that, you know, availability for some, a meeting like that?
Yes.
Really drill down on it?
Yeah, I, I think we've, we usually have pretty productive working sessions, and they're pretty straightforward.
All right. Okay. All right, then, to be continued.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jill. Thank you, Alex, for the presentation tonight, and this has been, I think, a very hefty, good conversation. All right, our next order of business, find my, is committee appointments is our next agenda item, and that is. Is our next agenda item and that is, let's see, we have a community housing partnership. We have two vacancies created by expansion of the membership. And we wanted to make sure that we distributed the terms to be staggered. So we have two terms, one for June 30th, 2022 and one for June 30th, 2024. In consideration, we have two people that we interviewed a couple of weeks ago. One being Bill Beistrum, we interviewed, well, we interviewed both people on December 22nd. The second being Lynn Plefner. Both of them really interviewed really well and I thought brought a lot to the table. So for now, I guess we'll, a motion to appoint, I guess, if we have a motion. Jeff.
Yeah, it's my pleasure to move to appoint Bill Beistrum to the Community Housing Partnership until June 30th, 2022. I'm going to say to 24 unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
Okay, since there's a term date, we probably should see if there's any, if anybody else wants to appoint the other to that term. I don't hear any. Shauna, your hand is raised. I just noticed. Sorry, Shauna.
That's okay. I would just ask that both terms be to the same date in order to maintain the number staggered. So if they would both be to 2024.
Okay, good.
Oh, okay. To 2024. I got it. All right. So we don't have to break them down to 2022? Shauna?
No.
Okay. All right. So we don't have.
I'll second that.
You'll second that? Okay. So we can take a vote?
So this is to 2024?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. And both of them will be till 2024. That's what, what I'm hearing.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll take a vote on, on Mr. Beistrum for June 30th, 2024, Community Housing Partnership. Jeff?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Okay, Bill Beistrum's been appointed to the Community Housing Partnership. Do we have a motion to appoint?
Madam Chair? Madam Chair?
Yes.
I, I move to appoint Lynn Plefner to the Community Housing Partnership until June 30th, 2024, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
A second for Peter. Peter or Corey? All right, take a vote. Corey?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Okay, great. We now have two appointees to, to the Community Housing Partnership. Thank you. All right, our last order of business before we adjourn is, again, we'll ask for comments from the public on the agenda items that we discussed. I'm just, if you raise your remote hand in the Teams app or speak out your name to be considered for the, to, to request to comment. Any comments? And we have one. Elaine?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The first comment I'd like to make is, as far as the priorities, I think the dredging program, even though it's a small amount of money, I think that's absolutely critical that we work to maintain that in town. It doesn't only affect the jobs of the fishermen who live here and their ability to do their job, but it affects tourism and recreation and it affects property values. If people live on waterfront property and boats can't get in, property values plummet, taxes, tax revenue goes down. So I would hope that that stays at the top of the list. In terms of the Collins Report, I, I don't really, I'm glad it was a grant because it's not what I expected. It's two years old. I don't thi- I think it's totally irrelevant right now in terms of the list and the priorities. Some of these things I don't even know what they are, but others are not on there. The transfer station, we had been talking about a four and a half million dollar renovation there. Not that I agree with it, but it should be on this list. And one of the other things that concerns me is that, you know, we, we appropriated 11 million for the waterfront. We don't really know how much we spent to date. And that's, the rest of it's not going to hit the tax rate until we actually, you know, get finished and borrow. So this kind of looks like, you know, when people talk to us and say, oh, well, 11 million is going to be two cents on the, on the tax rate. Well, that doesn't sound like much, but it all adds up, particularly when a lot of it hasn't even hit yet. And then I have to say, I was really, really disturbed about this belt filter press, which I think the selectmen were as well. I've never heard of this and a four and a half million dollar belt. And then we're told that the, there's two and the other one isn't working. That's $9 million. And how do we not know about this? And the wastewater treatment facility is only eight years old. And it's only servicing 1,200 people right now. There were 750 homes that were on the old system that got transferred to the new one. We've only added 400 houses. So is this going to be a recurring expense? My goodness. I mean, we're supposed to, this is supposed to have the capacity to handle 5,000 properties and we've only got 1,200 on and we're already out two belts in eight years. So I would hope we drill down on that and find out what's going on there. And I think that, my feeling is, we are in the middle of COVID and, and I hear this discussion and I understand you want to plan for five, 10, 15 years out, but I think it's time to put the brakes on. The people that are going to be paying for this, a lot of them are out of work. They're losing their businesses. They are on fixed incomes. We don't know where we're going with this. I don't see any end in sight. You know, supposedly the vaccine was supposed to be the miracle thing, but there are mutations. And now they're saying, but we still have to wear a mask. We still have to isolate. And you're going to need these vaccines every six to 12 months. So until we know what's going on, I think that we have to stop spending money. We have to take care of what we have, finish what we start. We've got a lot of projects that are still in the works and I would hope that we take a step back and decide what we need to do. And that's to take care of our existing infrastructure and to maintain it and to not do anything that's going to send taxes through the roof in the next five years. Because people, we don't know where a lot of our people are going to be. And if you want to attract young people, you shouldn't be increasing the taxes with the council on aging. So anyway, that's all I have for tonight and I'm glad we're going to move forward with the discussion. And this is the first of many because this is not what I had expected. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. Mr. Levitt? Rick?
Thank you, Shereen. Thank you, Shereen. The, the sky is not falling again, despite the previous speaker's comments. Chatham's tax rate is the lowest, not only on the Cape, but it's the second lowest in the entire state. What we're talking about here is setting priorities to address the needs of people, infrastructure needs. And this is, this has been a good session tonight and you need, the board needs to focus intensely on setting those priorities, but it's not going to raise the, it's not going to raise the tax rate. For example, the town of Sandwich, as I spoke about a little earlier tonight, is spending $16.5 million for a new senior center. They've set a high priority for a new senior center. That amount of expenditure will not affect the tax rate in Sandwich once. What Sandwich has done and what Chatham can do, it's a matter of priorities. Has, is using new revenue sources, brand new revenue sources. In this case, it's short-term rental tax and other brand new revenue sources to pay for the bonding of a $16.5 million project. So when anyone comes up to you and says to you, this is just going to, all these things are just going to raise our taxes, that's not, that's not so. It's fear mongering and it's wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levitt. Okay, any other public comments before we move forward? Any final words from the board? I see Jill's hands up. Jill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And so I just wanted, just to elaborate a little bit on the Collins Center Plan. The, the plan and the framework that was established in 2018, we've been using it every year. So back in the, the back of the warrant book, you've seen the five-year capital plan, the, the belt, all, everything that's been talked about today, except for the transfer station project we had took out because we had placed it and programmed it in future years. And so, again, I know tonight wasn't what you expected, but we, we were focused on working through the criteria for what we had identified as requests for FY22. And everything that you've seen in there, it's, you've seen it before, but again, it hasn't been in greater detail that I know that the board has wanted. So I just wanted to leave with that, that it's not an outdated plan because we update it every year.
Thank you, Jill. Dean?
Yeah, just to follow up on that, we, we had a presentation on the Collins Report Plan and Protocol a year and a half or so ago. And I, I thought then it was, it was a good model and I, I still think it is. And I'm glad that you're updating it because circumstances change. And I think it's, this is the first time we've actually seen how you carry it out with such specifics. So, you know, the comments I was making earlier in the meeting didn't reflect on, we're not meant to reflect on that negatively on the Collins Plan itself, but I think the Collins Plan is useful for formulating your budget. What I was trying to get at, and I think I'd made my point earlier, is that there's a broader context that requires the town's leadership to say, these are the important things in town and this, this is how we rank them. And then we ta- we take from that list the instruction on how to formulate the budget, implementing the Collins Plan, item by item. So that's, that's how I'm seeing it. Thank you, Shereen. Thank you.
When we framed the conversation to start, to have this agenda item, that's exactly where we were at, was that, you know, and where do we start from? We started with the, you know, the Collins Center ranking system, but we knew that there was a bigger, broader community lens that we needed to look, look at all of this. And I think that, you know, we've expanded it out a little more tonight, which I think is great. We, you know, put together Jeff's concept of, of, of a bucket list, so to say. And I think it's going to be really helpful as we move forward in the process and engaging in everybody into the conversation as well. So saying all that, I think that we're wrapped up for this evening. I do want to say that 2020 has been a year for the books and, and hasn't been the easiest. I think we should applaud our town staff for the work that they've been able to accomplish and to get us to this point with everything else that had to be done with COVID, with COVID. I, I really think that our community, I mean, even listening to Mary tonight, we've done a fabulous job. We haven't, you know, we're not through it, obviously, but I think we've, we're a stronger community and know what our values are. So I'm going to wish everybody a happy and helpful New Year for 2021. So I'll, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second? Okay, let's, let's take the roll call and call it a year. Corey?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye, and Happy New Year.
Yeah, Happy New Year. And Chair says aye. All right, good night, everybody. Thank you, Jill, and all the staff that prepared for tonight and everybody in the back, behind the scenes as well. So, good evening, Chatham. Take care.